All right, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. This is Bill Harkins. I will be on audio throughout the entire meeting. We have technical issues, so I will not be able to be on video. I'll be joined in the room with Assistant Town Manager Josh Gruber. So good morning to all. First, in terms of FOIA compliance, Phyllis, are we okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are.
Thank you. In terms of roll call, David Ames?
Present.
Tom Lennox?
Present.
Mark Grant?
Present.
And of course, myself, Bill Harkins. Before we get into the detailed items of the agenda, I'd like to make a preliminary comment. And I encourage my colleagues that are members of the committee to add anything in addition to what I'm going to say. This is a... This meeting came about as a suggestion of my conversations with the mayor, initiated by the mayor. And we thought it was timely for us to create a forum, an access point, if you will, to the entire community, for people throughout the community to reach out with us and share any items of interest, items of concern, items of worry, items of annoyance, what have you, and share them with us. We think it's timely because we've really been pretty much in shutdown in terms of our... The level of access we'd like to have with the community. And so we thought we would go to the technical world and reach out to the entire community and say, "Your views are important to us. Your concerns are important to us. We're a stronger community when we speak together from the same platform and we're a more unified community when we join together on simple as well as complex initiatives that hopefully endure to the betterment of the community." Today, we're a listening post. We're going to memorialize the comments, the directions, the questions advanced to us. We will then distribute those to the appropriate committee, and we'll try to identify that today. And we will then be asking ourselves from a policy level, what we can do or at a policy level, what would be the timing for a town council to deliberate? We'll be reaching out to staff and asking them, from a staff standpoint, what would be the... What is currently going on, maybe on a particular subject? Or if this is a new subject, what would be the key steps they would have to follow in terms of points of analysis leading to a schedule? We'd like to then draw a circle around this information and get it back to the public. And when we say get it back to the public, identify that on such and such a date, we will be responding to the following items that were shared with us on June 24. So again, we welcome this forum, and we look forward to hearing from the public verbally. And we will be sharing in written... We will be sharing comments on the written information shared with us today. And the Assistant Town Manager will be reading those documents to us. So as we move forward now, do we have an approval... A motion for approval of the agenda?
I would make that a motion to approve the agenda.
And I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now, if you will, we need a roll call to approve the agenda, which is really what we just did. So the next item... It's hard to believe, but the last meeting we had was just before COVID-19, March 2. We have minutes of that meeting. Is there a motion for their approval?
I would make the motion to approve those minutes.
Motion by David Ames, second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Mark? No, thank you. Now, the next item on the agenda, the heart of the agenda, are citizens' comments. We've received several written comments from the public. Josh Gruber, again, our Assistant Town Manager, is going to read those to us. He's going to suggest, from a staff standpoint, where we might remit these items. And we would also like to hear from our colleagues on the committee if that direction makes sense to them. So Josh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. As you indicated, the town staff has been working to try to open up various portals by which members of the public can provide comments and feedback to the town. In pursuit of those efforts, we posted on the town's website under our Public Town Hall Forum an open-ended question that basically asked, "Do you have any comments or suggestions about various matters affecting the Hilton Head Island community?" And in response to that question, we received five written comments. And so I'll kind of take those individually. And as you indicated, we'll provide some staff comments at the end of those. Open it up for any comments or thoughts by members of the committee, and then we'll move on to the next comment in those order.
Okay.
So the first comment that we received was from Mary La Liberty. And the suggestion was, "I would like to make a recommendation to have a parking section for motorcycles slash golf carts only at the beach parking lot as they take up an entire space and would allow more vehicles to park. Thank you for the opportunity to submit a suggestion." The town staff's response to that would be, "That's something that we can certainly look at. Obviously, technologies are changing. One of the things that we always want to keep in mind with this is the ability for people to safely interact. And so I know that we have some existing concerns with regards to the operation of golf carts on the roadways and how they interact with vehicles. So that's obviously something that we would have to take into consideration. But the suggestion itself is something that I think we can take a look at and provide some further response to."
Any comments from our colleagues on the committee?
Not at this time.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. We can move on to the next one, Josh?
The second comment received was from Owen Amber. And the response was, "Among the goals in the comprehensive plan is to, quote, 'enable innovation and excellence in regional planning.' Among the objections are these two, quote, 'apply tools, applications, and services to facilitate sharing information, supporting community connections and collaborative efforts, foster and encourage new business startups. The proposed ideals of excellence include using innovation and learning to continually develop and apply best practices and standards. In support of such direction in the comprehensive plan, it would be good if the town could engage, A) the state, Beaufort County, Bluffton, and other local jurisdictions in a collaborative effort to publish their plans in an open, standard, machine-readable format; and B) local tech developers to demonstrate how such data could be leveraged to enable not only more efficient and effective coordination of intergovernmental objectives, but also more transparent reporting of results achieved with taxpayer funding.'" The staff comments in response to that would be that we are actively going through the comprehensive planning process. That's been a very public engaged activity with a number of the work groups that were all brought together to kind of help develop the pillars that are going to be within the comprehensive plan document. The adoption of the plan will be, of course, a very public process itself, going not only through the Planning Commission, but then ultimately through town council. And all of those are going to present opportunities for the public to participate in the process of adopting the plan itself. And then, once adopted, the town will publish it and make it available on its website. And presumably, that can be done in a number of formats.
Okay. Any comments from the committee?
I'll make one, Mr. Harkins. I think Mr. Amber's concept and goal are good and something that would benefit the entire area. The idea of easy access to information, I think, is important. And then to have it be done in a way that we can compare what Hilton Head is doing to Bluffton in an easy way makes sense. I cannot appreciate, because I don't have the expertise, what the implementation challenges might be to achieve that, though.
Mr... Thank you. Mr. Lennox?
Thank you, Bill. I think some of the things that Mr. Amber brings up have application not only to Hilton Head, but regionally as well. So I'd like to go back and read his comment more thoroughly because I think this spreads to Bluffton, Hardyville, Ridgeland, and other areas. And specifically, as he talks about entrepreneurship, there may be some involvement or discussions appropriate with the Don Ryan Center.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I agree. I needed... I would like to get a copy of that letter so I can read it and understand what Mr. Owen is looking at. And then I think we can move forward and see where we make it strong. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. And I think those are all very good comments. I have had the pleasure of getting to know Owen Amber. And he's certainly a gentleman with exceptional expertise in the world of information development and sharing. And added to that, I would encourage that our leadership here at the town sit with Mr. Amber so that he will have more time to express in detail what he's trying to do here. But as a principle of thought, I think it's a very good direction.
And Bill, may I just say one more thing? We've been aware of this possibility now for over a year and a half. There have been many conversations at different levels about the potential. I think it would be helpful for council to receive from staff, staff's assessment of the potential, the hurdles to achieve it, and then the benefits if we were to get there. So that council will have staff's assessment of this idea. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Ames, I think that's an excellent idea. I think if I may try to translate what David is saying is that at a policy level here, as town leaders on the council, we may become advocates on a policy level to a certain direction. That's certainly an important first step. Added to that, from the mechanic's standpoint, the administrative standpoint, is we hand this off to staff. And staff has their... Many times, their hands are full with a variety of projects. And we don't want items to get lost in the shuffle. So what we'd like to do is have a turnaround time in terms of response from the staff on a best effort schedule. Again, for the public's consumption, I want to emphasize the fact today that we are gathering ideas, concerns, and worries that the public may have. If we think it's a good idea from a policy level, we're referring it to staff. We want to create a 360 loop here so that we get back to the public on what has occurred. So thank you. Next, Josh, please.
The next question that was received was from Beth Martilla. And the statement is, "The personal safety of town residents is a security with the current non-protocols that could be implemented and have not been by our mayor and town staff. We need stricter enforced measures protecting the people who actually live here. My previous email to our mayor. I certainly appreciate all the dedication the town of Hilton Head has done thus far to keep the permanent residents as safe as possible with the COVID-19 pandemic. However, it isn't enough and there isn't a full-time owner on this island that I have spoken with that feels differently than I do. Our restaurants opening is a joke since they do not enforce a stricter code to protect the people that have supported them for years prior to this March 2020. They should be wearing masks at all times. The golf tournament people were outspoken about the inability to curb the tourists at this time with no social distancing or protective measures. I was driving onto the island a short time ago and thought a better idea than saying, 'wear masks and keep social distance.' There should be a daily update letting all who know that come onto our island see exactly how many COVID-19 cases we have in a statement saying, 'masks, not an option, must wear in all public spaces. For the tourists and even residents who object to this, stay home. Our numbers are climbing substantially and it doesn't seem the town of Hilton Head has any sort of grasp on the intensity with which this is building. Please consider stricter guidelines. If the tourists don't come this year, they will still come back.'" The staff's response to this would be, obviously, this is something that is of great importance. There's a lot of ongoing discussions about this issue. Very recently, town council discussed this matter. And if that meeting had referenced the fact that it would be appropriate for the Community Services and Public Safety Committee to take up further discussions about what actions the town should and should not be undertaking at this point. And so my understanding is they're working to schedule a meeting with Mark Grant, who's the chairman of that committee, for some time prior to the next regularly scheduled town council meeting.
Right. I'll make a general comment and open it up to our committee. But I think I can speak on behalf of every member of town council that we're strong advocates of the following three suggestions: social distancing, wearing a mask in public spaces, and hand washing. And those are three critical guidelines that the professional community is saying to us to help mitigate the upward curve, which is very serious. The curve is growing, and we're concerned about this. When we speak about what we can do from an enforcement standpoint, we start to get into an area where we have found, with legal advice, that we do not have the authority to mandate. And absent the authority to mandate, we don't have the authority for enforcement. So we're relying on public information, guidelines, education, encouragement, pejoling, whatever, for the public to take this seriously. I'm encouraged by moving this to the Community Service Committee. And if anyone has any current information from the governor's office that I may not have, please share. I'll open this up to committee members. Mr. Ames?
When I hear that a meeting is going to be scheduled at some point, I get concerned. This is a situation that the community is challenged by at this moment. I received a call from a constituent who was coughing, having difficult breathing. Sounded as though she was frightened. Happened to be living alone. It brought into sharp focus that this is a situation that we don't have time to delay. Clearly, there is the opportunity for town council to use its bully pulpit to change the expectations of citizens and guests. And that expectation is, we wear masks on Hilton Head Island. To me, the challenge is, how do we send that message broadly enough that it actually begins to change behavior? When we discussed this almost a month ago, we recognized that without continuous publicity, that this message wouldn't get out. And so it's my belief that the town, perhaps without a legal responsibility or authority, has to publicize the expectation that guests and residents will wear masks in situations where they are in contact with other people. And that means restaurants, except while eating. It means retail shops, and so on. I just got back from New York, and I was impressed at the seriousness of citizens in their willingness taking social responsibility to wear masks. It seems to me that our challenge is having our businesses participate in a committed way. And I saw signs up there that said, "No mask, no entry." And I really believe that there is an expectation on the part of many people on this island that we will all do our part. And that means taking the social responsibility to wear a mask in circumstances where you might be protecting someone else from contacting or contracting COVID. So I think it is a situation where council needs to take advantage of the bully pulpit. Town staff needs to aggressively publicize that expectation of wearing a mask and that the Chamber of Commerce and businesses on this island participate in a committed way to protect citizens and convince tourists who come here on a seven-day basis that we expect them to be wearing masks as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ames. Key points well received here. And certainly, we keep telling ourselves that we have a new population here every seven days. Sometimes it's every 14 days. And these are new customers, if you will. And they're on vacation. They're here to relax. And I think it's part of human nature to let down their guard. But in the meantime, the infection rate is increasing. Josh, what can we do as a municipality to move forward? I know we can't mandate. We can't force. But we can educate. We can motivate. And what can we do better that we're not doing now? Or what can we do more of?
Sure. So staff has been actively working the last couple of weeks on identifying additional opportunities for us to message to the public our clear and unequivocal desire that people wear masks anytime that they are out in public. That's something town council already adopted a resolution to that effect a number of weeks ago.
Right.
And we've been taking that message and trying to put that message out there in many different forms. I know daily during town managers' daily statements, mayor's daily statements, and I've been pinching on Fridays, all of us have been including a statement to the effect of we're wanting to encourage people to wear masks at all times, to reinforce that. But we understand that we have to find new opportunities to communicate with the public outside of what we've already been doing. So along those lines, we've been investigating the possibility of purchasing billboard advertising space along the I-95 corridor and 78 corridor leading to the island, specifically with the thought of being or to notify the people that may be coming to visit the island that, as you're on your way here, know that our request to you is going to be to wear a mask because that's the public, you know, statements that we've made thus far. In addition to that, we're looking at possibly some of the marketing opportunities that are available within the airport, again, for the same purpose of trying to capture people and make sure they see that message as they're on the way into the island. We're also in the process of developing our own graphics to then be able to produce and procure a large number of masks that we can then begin distributing publicly. And so we're in the process of kind of finalizing what those look like. But then we're going to do a large purchase of masks that we can then begin distributing at various points across the island in an attempt to try to make those available on somewhat of a large scale. Along those lines, it is my understanding that the Chamber of Commerce is going to be doing something very similar to that. And I think, starting this Friday, they're going to be setting up in front of some, if not all, of the major grocery stores on the island to pass out masks that they have produced for essentially the same purpose. So there's a number of activities that are going on right now along those lines here in council's thought that we need to continue to market and message this action aggressively.
Well, what I'd like to do is share with the mayor our continued concern, which I know he shares, and see if we could have an updated action plan as soon as possible. And as soon as possible, today is Wednesday. Maybe we'll work with the mayor on this, but maybe a Monday, a call-in update where staff can present. Is that realistic?
Certainly, we can look for those opportunities. If nothing else, we can prepare some written documents that we can distribute out. You know, the question of calling meetings comes down to, what meeting is it going to be called? A forum, getting it scheduled and together, and then being able to have the technological capability to facilitate it. But yes, assuming that all those things come together, we can try to get that information out there as quickly as we can.
Right. I know this... I'm referring to town council, just bringing us together.
Well, I would say we have to talk with the mayor about that, whether or not we can schedule that or not.
Mr. Lennox, your thoughts?
I agree with all that has been said. And Josh, to your point about free masks in a town-sponsored program and the chamber's involvement on a path-forward conference call this morning, Bill Miles was conspicuous in saying that the chamber was working with the town to make that mask available to the large food stores on the island. And he also felt that it would eventually spread beyond that. So I think, first and foremost, that's a good start. But I agree with Dave, and the time is not on our side. So to the extent that we can move as quickly as we can, I think that benefits the entire community. Yesterday afternoon, the governor announced a new program in concert with the South Carolina Restaurant Association. And it's called Palm Meadow Priority. And for those on this call, I would encourage you to go to the website, which is palmmeadowpriority.com, and read what the commitment of not only the member restaurants, but those non-member restaurants as well, trying to get masks and other best practices initiated by all restaurants, employees, and customers. It's a commitment that they would make among themselves. And for the commitment and best practices, there would be a seal of some sort that would be displayed outside the restaurant. And hopefully, there would be enough peer pressure and customer pressure upon these businesses that they would feel compelled to comply. That being said, I recognize that we're at a crossroads of public safety and economic survival. So hopefully, we can do what's best for the public and the community and help restaurants and help businesses survive.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox. Mr. Grant?
Yeah. I'm glad to hear what Josh is doing in terms of, and the staff is doing in terms of that. My question would be, because I got an email in terms of Glenn Stanford's con... Idea of what we should do. So my suggestion is, do you think we should wait and just see what the staff come up to in terms of the next meeting? If so, I can support that, you know? My only concern is, just like Councilman Lennox said, is, you know, we don't have time on our side. So I would encourage us, especially the staff, if we have something... So I would encourage us, especially the staff, if we have something already going out, that we look at what we can do now to calm the fears of our citizens now. So at least let them know we're being more proactive, you know? So that's my suggestion.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes, yes, Mr. Ains.
I think we have to be more blatant. Mr. Gruber mentioned billboards on 95. I like that idea. But I'm thinking about, as people come to the island, maybe we need an emergency billboard that says, no mask, no entry, or wear your mask, or whatever the message is, but that we put up a significant sign that is blatant and announces the expectations of this island for people to be wearing masks. That way, we reinforce every person's, reinforce the message to every person who comes onto the island. So it would be my recommendation that staff put up that temporary sign on an emergency basis and signal what our town expectations are regarding masks.
And Mr. Ains, staff can look into that. I can tell you, one of the things that we'd have to coordinate with is 278 is a DOT corridor. And so for us to install anything on their property, we've got to work with them on it. So it's something that we can certainly take a look at, just know that it would take some coordination between multiple entities.
Josh, I understand that, and there are private property owners along there that might be very willing to allow that temporary emergency sign to go up.
I think it's an excellent idea. I think 95 is a good idea. It's probably a good idea for only one person. That's the one person driving the car. The others are all sleeping, getting ready to hit the island. They all will wake up as they go over the bridge. So excellent idea. We can't speak for the state, but the rhetorical question is, why wouldn't they support it?
And we do have the Highway Advisory Message Board that's posted just past the entrance to Windmill Harbor. It is continuing to broadcast that message. Obviously, we have the ability to tweak it a little bit, although we do have a limited number of characters that we can put in any kind of messaging there. But that's going to be there, and we've worked with the sheriff's office and their emergency management division to ensure that we would have a billboard available for constant use at all times.
Right. And I would like us to look at firing at least one or two more of those billboards if we can. Okay, thank you. Next comment from the citizens.
The next comment that was received was received, identified as the Coalition of Island Neighbors, and the statement is as follows. Bill, Tom, David, and Mark, we understand and see on your agenda for tomorrow that your committee is having a community listening session to receive feedback on various matters affecting the island community. Risa Prince and I plan to speak at your committee meeting this week on behalf of the Coalition of Island Neighbors, parentheses, coin. We believe that there are key issues which must be addressed. Those issues are as follows. Number one, 278 Gateway Corridor, need independent consultant, no impact on native island communities, and no six lanes. Number two, town manager selection process, inclusive public input throughout the process. Number three, equitable operational and capital funding reflective of the needs of all community islands. Number four, environmental stewardship, plan for sea level rise adaptation and regulations on development. Number five, Gulligichi preservation and native islander respect, accelerate timetable and expenditures to address task force recommendations. Number six, balanced tourism plan, address over-tourism and honor all island values. Thank you, Patsy Bryson and Risa Prince. The staff comments to this, obviously, there's a number of different items that are identified here. Just to kind of go through them in order with regards to the 278 Gateway Corridor, the town has created a 278 Gateway Corridor Advisory Committee. That committee's been active in doing process as it stands to date with DOT and the developing of a preferred alternative. It's our understanding that there's information provided back by the Department of Transportation sometime in the fall, which then the committee is going to likely look at and provide some additional guidance to council on. But it is a very public process. It's been active and ongoing for a while, and we would like to say that that's the best way to address any questions or concerns with regards to that project. The town manager selection process, council's going through that right now. I don't, my staff doesn't have any other thoughts on that. The equitable operational and capital funding, the town's capital improvement plan is always a function relative of public engagement. So the projects that are identified are identified through a public process, particularly with the planning commission. And so that is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on what projects the town will look to undertake in the immediate future with its capital spending.
Right. And on that point, I think from an educational standpoint, we take for granted that that's a normal process because we're used to it. It's not fair to expect the public to understand the process. So I think things like this, it's good to hit the refresher every now and then, and on this particular, to get a note out to the public via our website on what the process is and highlight the public involvement.
With regards to environmental stewardship, the town continues to look at opportunity for new activities that we can undertake. I know that right before the pandemic started, the town council threw additional regulations with regards to tree protection and environmental protection standards. We are continuing to look at development standards, particularly with regards to flood elevation levels. I believe that likely sometime this fall, there will probably be some additional brought forward with regards to potential changes that may be proposed or recommended along those levels.
And Ed, what group would that head toward?
Ultimately, that would likely be, I believe, the public planning committee.
I would think.
It is, I believe that would probably fall. And then the fifth one, the Gulligichi preservation and native islander respect. Obviously, the town council has appointed a Gulligichi Task Force, and they're actively involved. With everything that's been going on with the pandemic, staff's goal has been to get all of our advisory boards, agencies, and commissions back to meeting via electronic means by the end of July. So within the next couple of weeks, we would expect them to have a meeting set and held to be able to begin having active discussions again.
And my sense is, these discussions will be addressing what's on the table for consideration with the Gulligichi input, as well as the public planning committee, is the creation of an overlay district for the community, respecting the native island community's interest in development, but development in a comprehensive and complimentary way for the better, for their betterment and the betterment of the community.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. That is staff's understanding as well. That was one of the highest-rated items to come out of the Gulligichi Task Force report, which is to work on that. So I know that staff has been actively working on that particular project. I believe Sean Colan is on this meeting, and if he is and has the ability to participate, I would throw it to him if there's any additional comments that he might want to provide along with.
Sean, if you're on, please join in.
Yeah, what Josh has shared, and your assessment is correct. The overlay, we drafted an overlay. We were scheduled to go back to the task force, I believe, in middle to late March. Obviously, this has interrupted our meeting schedule. The overlay encompassed two or three or four of the top priorities that were the priorities that were recommended by the task force and supported by council. But we are putting together a plan to resume the public meeting and start to move that information from the task force to planning commission and ultimately onto council.
Thank you, Sean. For the public, from the public's perspective, they may not know what an overlay district is. Would you share what an overlay district is, and what are the four, three or four features that we would like to see as building blocks for that overlay district?
Well, sure. So generally speaking, overlay is supplemental treatment to a geography on the island. So we have the more traditional zoning districts, which allow residential, commercial, industrial, and other uses. All of those zoning districts have performance standards, setbacks, buffers, height limitations, so forth. An overlay identifies areas that are unique for, you know, based on some characteristic. With this one, we've identified the historic neighborhoods as an overlay. And based on the recommendation from the task force through the work of the consultant and staff, there are some additional considerations to the performance standards, different considerations to the potential density within these areas that would be modified or changed as a result of this. So an overlay is, it complements the underlying zoning district, but provides some additional considerations based on some unique characteristics of that area. Without getting too detailed on the specifics, because it hasn't been, the overlay hasn't been reviewed yet by the task force, I'll just share that there are some consideration and recommendations coming out for potential creation of a new zoning district, RM6. But the other considerations related to performance standards are to help address issues that we've had in the past with right-of-way widths, road widths, dirt road paving, potential issues with setback and buffer dimensions in the overlay that have been problematic for these historic neighborhoods in the past. So I will continue that conversation with the task force here in July.
What would your anticipated timeframe be to bring a package that enjoys the native island support, the staff support? The timing to bring that package to town council for review and approval?
So we had a timeframe, a schedule set out. What we'd like to do is take it to the task force for an informational meeting, have some discussion, and then bring it back to them for their approval. So a couple of meetings with the task force, and then we would take it through the normal process with the LMO, Committee of Planning Commission, Planning Commission, Public Planning Committee, and then council. So we're hopeful that that starts here in July. You know, to try to map out an entire process, we're probably looking here late third quarter, early fourth quarter of this year.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on that?
I have a comment. We'll get a chance. I have a comment.
Yeah, let me open it up to our colleagues. Mr. Grant?
Yeah, one question, you know, and my concern is, I think one of the problems that we have in terms of the, due to the coronavirus, they were kept informed of what was going on. And we had this time sheet passed out that had everybody confused, filled with what is going on with this. So my advice is, I think we need to sit down with the chairman of that and get back on a time schedule of how we want to get this thing solved and get this thing moved forward. So everybody is on the same page, you know? Because in spite of the coronavirus happening, people should have still been meeting, working, and getting this thing done. And my concern is, you know, and the question I'm hearing is, told the Gulligich Task Force to take a step back, okay? And they did, and we're still haven't got anything or any feedback as of yet of what needs to be done. And I realize that coronavirus is a major issue, and it is, and to be truthful, it's understandable. But my point would be, my point would be, until we start having, building relationship with people in the community, there's always going to be questions about what is going on, what is the town doing, is the town in favor of this or not? And I think that, I think that's something that we have to start doing better job, okay? Regardless, in terms of over the department, who's the second-in-command, third, whatever. We've got chairmen of different committees. And one thing that should have been communicated, not just from, well, it has been from the mayor, but it needs to come from the staff that's over different departments and say, look, planning commission, due to coronavirus, we're going to take a step back for a minute. And once the mayor tells us or the council tells us what we're going to, our plan of action is, then I will get back to you in a letter of writing of what we need to be doing. And that's my major issue, is that there's not enough feedback going back and forth from committee to the community. And I think that's something that we got to work on, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I see we have a comment from Josh Gruber.
Yes, sir. We share those concerns, and that's why we're actively working with the chairman to get a meeting set for this body, to get those discussions restarted quickly.
And Mark, your comment, if I may, underscored some of the early, the guidance that David Ames was emphasizing during the beginning of this meeting, that yes, from a policy level, we can advance something. From a staff level, staff has a number of things that are going on. There's been interruption in that, which is understandable because of the pandemic. But the need to start trying to get back on track is recognized, and I think that will be expressed in, I think, from Sean in a, an updated schedule that we can share with everybody. Again, for the public that's listening, we want to refer these either back to or push the refresh button on a particular subject that's being worked on by a group and get that into a schedule so that this is just not a discussion meeting today. It's a meeting that may be jump-starting some things that have been somewhat idle, and we're putting, we're putting a schedule on it in a deliverable date. So, Mark, thanks for your comments. Mr. Ames?
I don't have anything to say specifically about item number five, Gulligichi, but I wanted to hear what staff, Josh, was going to say about balanced tourism plan, and then I would have some comments about all the recommendations in this list.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lennox?
This, this list really covers the waterfront. I have had email exchanges with both Patsy and Risa on most of these, and I think some of the suggestions that they make really have merit. And I would also say that these are really strategies to support the overall vision of the town. And I think there have been tactics underneath these strategies that are in the process of being implemented or have been implemented. And to David's comment about the balanced tourism plan, we have spent a lot of time even being sequestered because of the emergency state, working on over-tourism and community values, and how that relates to our relationship with the DMO. And there are two touchpoints that we have specifically where that relates. One is the review and approval of the DMO marketing plan, which we are in the process of reviewing right now. And the second is in the agreement to be structured and executed between the town and the town's designated marketing organization. I think it's safe to say that both of those issues, over-tourism and island values, are being looked at and will be addressed in both of those touchpoints with the DMO.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lennox. Any other comments on the public? Any other comments on the public?
Excuse me. Did staff have anything to add to balanced tourism plan? And then I would like to make some comments about the entire list.
Sure. So, Mr. Ames, staff's response to the balanced tourism plan was going to be to highlight the fact that town councils actively engaged in discussions with the chamber as their potential designated marketing organization partner, and that those discussions are likely going to roll the tourism plan that both parties kind of jointly decide upon. So that, that is, that was going to be staff's response.
Okay. Thank you. Now, if I may, I have a couple of responses to this list. One, it's a very good list. If we were to go to the community, there might be items added to that list, and then we would be exactly back in the trap of we have too many things in front of us without enough priority given to one item or another. And the, and the trap there is that we have, in the past, looked at this list in silos. And I would encourage us to look at these as interrelated objectives. If you, if you, if you think about community character and community values in the context of each one of these, then you begin to bring the community together in a way that is unique and durable. And so I, I encourage both at the policy level and at the staff implementation level to more broadly think about who we are as a community, what we represent as important, and in those values, express them in the decisions we make on any of these items. The, the lost opportunity on all of these is our ability to be thinking about leadership or leadership thinking. In other words, what do we, what do we as a community try to do to break new ground in any one of these six items? Certainly, the overlay district in the, is an opportunity for this island to do something that other communities haven't thought about doing. I think we can break new ground on that one. Environmental stewardship isn't just about trees. It's, it's much more fundamental than that. It's how we survive or protect, preserve nature's influence on the way we, we behave, the way we live on the island, and how we protect that, that natural environment for future generations. It's, it's much more fundamental than a setback or a tree, but, but those are parts of the puzzle. The equitable operational and capital funding, I think we have to be much more strategic in targeting where we invest public dollars for the benefit of the entire community and for the economy of the community. And I, I think there are opportunities to do that. What it boils down to, in my mind, is in, in number six, balanced tourism plan. Needless to say, that visitor economy is, is absolutely fundamentally important to our, our quality of life and the choices that we have, the diversity of choices that we have on the island. The, the town government, the Chamber of Commerce and its members, and the residents of this community, I think, have to come together and agree on where we're going to take this island. So it's not just the chamber deciding, or it's not just the residents of the community deciding, or the town enacting ordinances and public and, and investing dollars. Somehow, those three groups have to come together, decide exactly what the character of this community is, what the values are that we're going to protect, what kind of leadership thinking that we're going to portray, and then target the, the capital, the public capital, the, the services that we provide, the programs that we provide, and the quality of life that will benefit from that kind of thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from our colleagues on the committee?
Yeah, I have just one question.
Sure. This is Mr. Grant, please.
Yeah, I was going to ask him in terms of the 278 advisory committee that was brought up. Have they been consistently meeting and engaged on whatever we're doing with the 278, or because of coronavirus, it has stopped?
They, along with all the other groups, as of when the town shut downtown hall, there have been no meetings since that point, but they are in discussions as well with staff to get the meetings restarted at some point. I believe they're looking at trying to get some additional information from the Department of Transportation, which would then allow them to have something to discuss at that next meeting.
And just to be clear, because of this coronavirus, is everything going to be pushed back in terms of the guidelines and the timetable that was set out earlier? Do you know that, Josh?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I think that's something that Department of Transportation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. But I was going to say, too, David, I agree with everything you just said earlier. I agree. It's not, it's not easy when, in terms of leadership, and that's the thing what we have to do. We have to have a vision in terms of leadership and also keep moving forward. So, yeah, I agree with everything you said, David.
Just for a general comment, we're, to the public, we're in the, we all know that a public statement has been made by our town manager that he will be retiring by year end. So we've been in the process of looking at key search firms throughout the country to help us in that search. We will be narrowing that group down to four or five people probably by the end of, we, we have narrowed that down to four or five firms, and we'll be interviewing them possibly as early as the end of this week. One of the key questions that the group that we call on, and one of the key questions the candidates will ask is, what, what, what are our positions on key areas? And certainly, in the listing that's here, equitable capital funding is going to be a, a, a point of discussion. What's your viewpoint on environmental stewardship? We have an historic jewel here with the native island community. What's going on, and what's your position on supporting and growing and developing? If you're an island with limited land, and you're an island with fragile environmental issues, key assets, what's your view on, what's your view on creating a sensible balance between the economy and the volume of tourists? So these are all things that underscore what David is saying, that they all are very insulated, and they speak to the kind of culture that, that we want to support, the kind of vision that we want to enact, and, and the kind of strategy and tactics we want to set forth in the community. So it's going to be incumbent upon us as a town council to try to achieve as much unanimity of thought on these points, so that someone coming here as a, as a new town manager can say, I understand your platform, I understand your direction, I like it, and I can support it. Okay. Any, any other letters from the community?
Yes, sir. The last one that we received was from John and Margaret Swenson. Their comments are as follows. Thanks, Mayor McCann. Hilton Head is now considered a, quote, hotspot. This would not have happened had it been mandated that masks and social distancing were required upon an island. Now, as residents, we are confronted with increased cases of COVID-19. We have been diligent with our protection, but not the tourists who have been allowed to mingle and not protect themselves, thereby jeopardizing our health. It is now time for you to make some requirements, i.e. mask wearing and social distancing, which by the way, should include employees of restaurants who do not. Protect your residents before more become victims of this relaxed atmosphere. Your consideration will be appreciated since the Fourth of July season is upon us with more visitors. We need action. Thank you, John and Margaret Swenson, Hilton Head. Staff's response to this would be, you know, we covered this on a previous comment.
Yeah, we did.
So I don't know if there's, there's anything to discuss beyond what has already been.
No, no, but it's important to acknowledge that we did receive your comments. We appreciate them, and we've discussed them via another letter. Okay. Now, the next section of the meeting is going to deal with the opportunity that is there to the public to call in. People that called in were asked to do so by a certain date, and we do have a listing of two individuals that press interest in calling in. Each caller will be unmuted by staff and given three minutes to address the committee. At the three-minute mark, they will be, they, they will be alerted that their time is up. So the first caller we have the pleasure of hearing from is Risa Prince, and I gather staff is in another room activating that call. Do it, please.
No?
Yes, ma'am. Loud and clear.
Good morning. Is this Risa Prince?
This is Risa. Can you hear me?
Yes, Risa. Good morning. Thanks for taking the effort to call in. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Patsy and I signed up to speak to elaborate a little bit more on the brief email that we submitted. We're going to split our remarks to avoid redundancy, so I'm starting, and then I'll turn it over to Patsy. I would like to, to reemphasize what Mr. Grant mentioned earlier. We all acknowledge the working conditions under COVID have changed, but the town certainly has technology available that will result in the town not having to stop doing the work that needs to be done. So we all look forward to all of the committee meetings resuming quickly. As Mr. Ames described, rebalancing tourism is probably the overarching effort that needs to be done. A few weeks ago, town council agreed that it is a critical discussion for our future. It's not simply a marketing strategy review with the DMO. Answering the questions of how to balance the economic need for tourism, what kind of tourism, and respect for residents' rights is the first step necessary before we embark on future investments. The thousands of hours of effort donated by our residents to the R Plan process demonstrates the community-wide commitment for planning our future. That work establishes what we want Hilton Head to become, and we all need to get on that path now, and use that work to make principle-centered decisions. And as town council votes for future projects, land use and funding decisions need to align with these principles. Moving on to the Gateway Corridor, the 278 Gateway Corridor project is likely the biggest infrastructure investment for this generation. Without the rebalanced tourism conversation, we simply cannot confirm that the future traffic demand assumptions used by SD DOT will actually meet our future needs. And based on what DOT has already concluded, all of the currently proposed alternatives currently have failing intersection scores, which means the congestion problem won't be fixed, and all of the alternatives severely disrupt the stony community. Town council should not agree to investing nearly half a billion dollars with the expectation of failure. Simply put, none of the current alternatives are good enough. So in our opinion, we need to push the pause button on this massive investment until we have clear definition of the future tourism expectations and the roadway performance expectations. Neither the Gateway Corridor Committee, nor town council, nor town staff have or should have internal experts who can provide an unbiased analysis of the alternatives with regard to our community development priorities. Taxpayers expect town council to protect their investment and to only move forward with this massive project when we are confident it will deliver the rebalanced community needs. And we need to hire an independent consultant to give us assurance that whatever proposed final project we come up with will actually deliver on our community expectations. I'm now going to address the equitable operating and capital investment. A representative government is intending to do just that, represent the needs and wants of the entire community. Town council needs to make the difficult decisions on investment priorities of our limited resources. Those are taxpayer funds. Those decisions must honor and reflect the long-term community priorities and not cater to special interest groups. There have been many discussions about investment opportunities that have not yet received funding, including completing the island-wide access to basic services, electricity, water, sewer, fire hydrants, and broadband, affordable housing, repurposing vacant commercial buildings, unique-to-Hilton Head cultural projects, and creating economic opportunities for all residents. Despite these gaps, in the fiscal year 2021 budget, town council still authorized $300,000 of spending in special interest projects behind the gates. As discussed during the budget conversations, the plan you authorized will change as revenue projections did not account for the impact of COVID-19. So when you review the spending plan, you must keep the community development principles as the goals to ensure short-term operating and capital investment decisions aligned to provide equitable spending throughout the island to benefit all taxpayers. That concludes my remarks, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Harkins.
Thank you, Risa Prince, for your comments. Again, we're trying to stay within the three-minute period, and now we have the pleasure of hearing from Patsy Bryson. Please.
Yes, good morning. It's Patsy Bryson. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning, Patsy.
Thank you very much. I'm going to address the three remaining issues on our list. The first one I'll address is town manager selection, and I was heartened to hear you, Mr. Harkins, say that during your consideration of this process, that the town council needs to consider what are its important priorities and what it, what will be its vision for the island, and we're, we're hopeful that our list will be helpful in that. Most importantly, this is a major decision for the town council to make. Based upon the history of the council manager system on this island, the town manager holds significant power on this island, so be very careful about this selection process. In addition, it's key to have public input throughout the process, not just at the end, as the mayor indicated. It's important for you to be able to have the values and the input of the public in order for the public to value the selection that you make. It would be recommended that there be a citizen advisory council appointed early on, and that they be an advisory group all along the process. This should not be the same group of folks usually appointed, but should be a cross-representation of various island interests. In addition, the finalists should be, should appear at a public forum with questions and answers from the public. The second issue is environmental stewardship. During the town council December workshop- answers from the public. The second issue is environmental stewardship. During the town council December workshop, you identified environmental stewardship as a key value on the island and what you hope would continue to be a key value 10 years hence. When you look at the Our Plan Environmental Sustainability Work Group, their draft core value chapter synopsis talks about environmental sustainability. One of the existing issues or conditions noted is that Hilton Head Island is no longer at the forefront of sustainability. It has not innovated or kept local practices on track with emerging contemporary developments in sustainability. When the Finance Administration Committee received the reports of the rating agencies for the town of Hilton Head Island, two of the rating agencies identified concerns about the town not addressing potential weather-related impacts into its long-term capital and financial planning, given the town's coastal location and tourism industry presence. And also, Moody said that the coastal location is susceptible to weather-related events and rising sea levels, and that that could be a credit challenge for the island. Beaufort County participated in a regional project and developed a sea level rise adaptation report published March of 2015. This was an intergovernmental cooperation project with the Beaufort County Council and included the town of Bluffton. It was funding provided through the South Carolina Sea Grant Consortium and assistance from Social and Environmental Research Institute, the North Carolina Sea Grant, Carolina's Integrated Sciences and Assessment, USCB. Where was the town of Hilton Head Island? Town of Hilton Head Island was not listed as an affiliate. If you look at one of the values on our island, it is definitely environmental sustainability. It's time to put that as a priority. In fact, a refocus on our overbalanced tourism would revert to ecotourism and environmental sustainability. Lastly, but certainly not least, and I'm glad to hear the thorough discussion about the Gullah Goochey Preservation Task Force and native islander respect. I echo the comments that were made by Mr. Grant. It is high time that we move this to the front. And I do hope that we will see a meeting of the task force during the month of July, no later than the month of July. And I appreciate that Mr. Harkins asked for the timetable to bring the package to town council. But above all, remember that the 278 corridor will destroy, that project as planned, will destroy the Stony community. There is no way in the world that you can look in the mirror and not say that the 278 corridor project as planned should be approved by this town council. If you are indeed serious about protecting the Gullah Goochey culture on this island, you must stop that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy Bryson. Those are the only two members of the public that requested to come in and speak to us, so we thank Risa and Patsy for their interest and involvement. Next item on the agenda is new business. My understanding, we have no unfinished business before our committee. Is there a motion for adjournment?
David, I'm you.
I would make that motion to adjourn at this time.
I got a question before we adjourn. I got one comment.
All right.
Yeah. And before we adjourn, I just wanted to bring this up before we adjourn. Did we ever talk about plantation signs or the connotation of plantation? Because I might have missed that if we did.
No, you did not miss it.
Okay. If not, one thing I wanted to say was, you know, I got this letter from Emory Camel, and it was very good in terms of the history of the type of the name plantation. And I think as town council, we need to discuss that, okay? Talk about it as, and I don't care if you support it or you don't support it, but my point is, oh, I do care if you support it or not, but where does the town stand on this topic? Okay? What are we willing to do or say in terms morally where we think we need to go as an island? I think David Ames talked about that. But I just think, I've been getting letters, and I think we need to, at one time or another, speak up on this. Now, I'm not saying let's rush this to council. What I'm saying is, let's have a real conversation. Okay? Let's get the facts. Let's have staff do some research, provide us some data. Let's see the economic value versus whatever else, the other factors that go on. And then let's have a real answer. So when people talk about what the town can do and what the town can't do, what are the things that we stand for as a council, we'll be able to communicate that effectively. Okay? And my other point, too, is I believe in a process. So I don't think we should be rushing to an answer. I just think that we should have, we should have real conversation on this, you know? And as we move forward as a council, then we can work together to build better relationships so people can say, look, when you bring something to the town, we're not dodging it. We're actually trying to face these things headfirst and come up with real answers. Okay? So I just wanted to bring that up to you, okay? And also, too, and this is the last one. The Gullah Task Force taking on or having effective communication in terms of dealing with the police department. I've worked, since the last eight years, I've worked closely with the police department. And I had an incident over the weekend, and I had the opportunity to work with Captain Beans. And she shared it, and she did her investigation, and everything worked out well. And I communicated it back to that point. But my point is, when you've got five people sitting at a table, native islanders, whoever, and they can say, hey, our police department is great, they got some challenges, and they're doing the best, but here, here's some things that they can work on in terms of communicating better to the public. That makes us as a whole island better. Okay? I'm not trying to rush that either. I think that needs to be a conversation that we can bring to public safety. If that's where it starts, fine. But I think that's something that we need to look at doing, too. Okay? So that was my only two comments I wanted to add. And also, Bill, thank you for putting this together. You know, I think this was a real value. Okay?
Bill, I'd like to piggyback on what Mark just said.
Yes, please do, Mr. Ames.
When Mark said, I don't want to rush this, we need to have serious conversations, that really is sort of the substance of progress. And the opportunity for us in this community to use leadership thinking in this area is a tremendous focus for us to think about. It's not going to come in the typical way. We're going to have to think about how we bring people together and understand someone else's point of view. And I don't have an answer to that, but Mark is right on when he says it can't be rushed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ames. Before we conclude, two comments, if I may. Mark, in terms of the discussion about the Sheriff's Department, I would respectfully suggest that you, as Chair of Public Safety, work with the mayor and get that on as an agenda item. And the Sheriff's Department, as I recall, attends your meetings on a quarterly basis. So if that timeframe is good, or you want to accelerate that, I would suggest that. In terms of the use of the word plantation, I would respectfully suggest that the letter that you're in receipt of, that you kindly share that with all members of town council and discuss with the mayor how you both would like to proceed. It could be a discussion item on town council. You could also have discussion as to if something were to be considered for change, what standing do we have versus the standing of a particular community that affixes to their name, the word plantation. And it could be an item, I think, of education and discussion. And I think it would have value in doing that. So thank you for bringing those two points up. All right. Is there any other discussion? Any other commentary or discussion? We do have a motion from Mr. Ames to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ames?
Aye.
Melina?
Aye.
Mr. Grant? Okay. Thank you very much for your participation, and thank you to the public for listening in. We stand adjourned.